Well, Scott, you cook on Thanksgiving. Well, we understand lunch yesterday and we're going to my brother's house in Minnesota today. And then we're going to my wife's family in Frisco tomorrow. So I'll be turkey out. And Friday I gotta cover the Van Gillen football game in Tyler. This travel week.
Morning, Joe.
Good morning, yes, sir.
A little colder.
Next week, five.
How are you?
What?
How are you?
Well, you get to make a return appearance.
I'm too.
How about that?
It is one more time. How's everything in your world?
Uh, pretty lively right now.
Pretty lively, huh?
I have my daughter home from college.
Oh.
And she'll be home throughout the holidays because their semester ended today, as a matter of fact.
Oh, wow.
Her last final was Monday.
Wow.
They're doing a major COVID cleaning of all their academic buildings.
Yeah, so first they go to school.
The turnout.
Yeah.
So they sent everybody home effective today.
Yeah, that's a smart thing.
And don't come back till January tenth.
Because now you say, come home for this, and then you go back and you stay there for a week of exams or whatever.
Yeah, exactly.
You're out, so all this kind of makes sense to me.
Yeah. Oh, by the way, maybe I was asking, all pictures from the Hey Show, we can be mainstay use the school.
Okay.
Everybody looks so pretty in their pictures.
I didn't get to go this year.
Right, I know. You were missed, let me tell you.
I was sick, I'm telling you. I had pneumonia and no iron.
Yeah.
My fever, I was out for two weeks. I mean, I thought I was gonna throw up there for a while.
When I got, when I got COVID, I was out of the office for five weeks.
Wow.
Our entire family had it. We took turns.
Yeah, spread the love.
Spread the love.
Spread the love. That stuff is pretty rough.
Yeah.
Really has a big impact on them. Why do you get sick and everything? So y'all got Indian football games or still going?
Van.
Van, yes. I didn't play long enough, I'm not.
Van and Gilmore playing two o'clock Friday at Rose Stadium in Tyler.
Oh, wow.
And.
They got a hand score.
Well, they're both ranked in the top ten in the state. And it's gonna be a tremendous game. I was talking to Coach Martin at Van earlier in the week, and he said one of the Tyler school officials told him they're expecting 10,000 people.
I would think so.
Yeah.
I would think so. The whole town of Gilmore for sure would be evacuated, and the whole town of Van.
That's right.
Yeah, I would think easily.
Yeah, yeah.
Like my son, he teaches up in the hand handle. And he, their team is still down there. They're ranked. It's like today, the last time I saw them, they were like. They just been trying to plug in right along, so.
Well, depending on which poll you look at, Gilmore is ranked anywhere from two to five.
Right.
And Van is ranked anywhere from seven to 10, so. Um, it's gonna be quite a game, I think.
I have been just practicing, right? Nobody's even come close to being, I mean, I just, I'm not like, remember they played.
Yeah, the last.
At least they got a ball, she started getting injured.
Well, Gilmore has scored 71 points, 186.
Very well. It's kind of like Strattler scores, I mean, like, he's 50, you know, and then usually he goes and, you know, the other kids are playing and they're still scoring, so they got a really good team, so. They have hopes of winning the whole time, we'll see.
And I really think the winner of this team, Fran, has got a real shot at getting past.
I would think so. I think that's gonna be it. I'm staying almost always.
Yeah, continue.
I'm very easy.
Yeah, and there are these, I don't like to kill.
Yeah, yeah, Dr. Jackson's last minute.
That's right. Morning, Dan. How are you?
Good.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, same to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that. I want to come down here, I've got some, um. I just, I said, I said, yes, one more time.
It was just a power. Not his situation.
Have to get this done.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's a power.
It's not like.
Sometimes it'll be a nice sunny day at all. Everything just.
Our group is so serious, you know, December fifth, that you can have that very much. So, yeah, it's, yeah, let's, let's hope now.
I would look past the. We're gonna, we took the 12:30.
Yeah. From here, right?
Morning, how are you? Did you get KO triggered up this morning? Yes, I did. You didn't use my quote, I said.
Oh, did he not?
Coach Martin told me, way back when he was working in Ed Bryant's head coach, told us, told me, if your team is still running after Thanksgiving, your team is not a turkey.
That's exactly right.
We always play, Grand Slade always, we played, we played on Thanksgiving Day one time.
Yeah.
Uh, Salina.
Yeah, I saw, uh, it's a denture field. Playing tomorrow night.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. I was surprised that he wasn't scared for Thanksgiving.
Yeah, we.
He did.
They, they do. That'd be a good scene.
I'm just glad we really have good weather for Friday.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock, it's gonna be perfect.
Hey, we can get some. They may not like it.
It could be done.
We can get the. Andy Park.
Hey, how are you doing?
Man, it's a good, it's also about that kind of thing, so. Well, I wouldn't brush. Might have been a slow drive. Play. Nah, nah, it was, yeah, they, they have. Last one, we got the 28th hand. Yeah, that's out of control. Yeah.
Let's see.
Well, yeah, it's gonna be. What about?
Yeah, I talked about that.
Hey, David.
I talked.
Yeah.
What do you think about Gilmore then?
Oh, I think.
You got. But thank you.
You're right.
I know you're not.
I think. I hope. I think. The finish shot. One of the best.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I don't know. I was like, couldn't. I might put it later. Morning.
How you doing, man?
Good.
Good. Better turn this off. How you doing?
I'm good.
Yes, ma'am. It is, uh, not, I just stepped down, sir. I just went downstairs. But it's a long way. It's a long way ahead.
Your KO was trying to figure out how to broadcast both them games.
Yeah.
He can't do it. He can't do it.
Logistics didn't work out.
He offered somebody to get a helicopter.
Nobody offered a private jet. Because he, he put it out there if someone had one.
Yeah.
What'd you think about poor old Garrett?
I'm sorry?
I said, what'd you think about poor old Garrett?
Old Jason Garrett. I tell you, they just can't catch break, coach can. And I think his brother, it was a college coach somewhere up in the northeast, I think they let him go.
Oh, same day?
Not the same day, but the same week.
That wasn't a very good week.
No, not a very good week, that is.
For about 10 years.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for being here. If you'll stand, we'll be led in word of prayer by Mr. Melton. Remain standing for our place.
Let's pray. Father God, we, we continue this morning, Father, with thankful hearts, Father, for all you do, all the blessings you give us, Father, every day, Father. And Father, we pray we don't take these blessings for granted. And Father, just to thank you for Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. And Father, we would ask that you bless this county this morning and, and certainly give us discernment to make the best decisions for the county and the voters and the citizens we represent. Father, we also want to pray for our nation, Father, who are going to Thanksgiving this, this weekend. Father, let's be truly thankful for what we have, Father. And Father, continue to bless our men and women in, in uniform and especially those that are in harm's way. And we just give you praise and thanks in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one say, under God, one and individual.
Called a order of the regular session of Van Zandt County Commissioners Court, uh, Wednesday, November the 24th, 2021, at 9:03 a.m. Now, the quorum is established with all members of the court pressed. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the rating of the minutes, uh, of the meetings of the Commissioners Court approval, same for October the 27th, 2021, and November 10th, 2021. So move. Second, got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions, discussion, corrections? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner West.
Second, Pierce.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion about concerning the bills that's been submitted for payment? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted.
So move, Pierce.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Second by Commissioner LaPrada. Is there any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor of ratifying the county bills as submitted, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Number five, general business. Is there any general business that we need to be made aware of? Any announcements or anything from anyone? We wish everyone a happy Thanks, Thanksgiving, that you spend valuable time with your family and rejoice in all the Thanksgivings we have. Public comments. Scott, you want to sign up for public comments? No one signed up. Okay, we'll move to item number seven. Discuss and consider annual Texas A&amp;M Ag Life Extension Program interpretation of the 2021 Family and Community Health Programs of Van Zandt County to the Commissioners Court by Melissa Rhodes, County Extension Agent. You may address the court, Melissa.
Good morning, and that seems like I was just here, but today I've switched hats and I'm here to represent my programs I do for the family and community health for Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension. So, uh, today I just want to briefly go over the programs that I offered. I've given you a copy of everything, so you'll have an opportunity to look at it on your own time, but I won't hold the court up with this, uh, being super detailed, but. The thing is, uh, I offer a lot of health and wellness programs to our county. Uh, some of the things that I've offered this past year is I did a mindful wellness series that was offered online along with other counties, uh, across the state. We had in our county four participants that completed the three-day series. Uh, wished it would have been bigger numbers, but that's, you know, people are just getting either adjusted to being online or they're burned out with being online, so we're kind of working it both ways, I guess. Uh, I also did my Walk Across Texas Bank Challenge. Uh, this is like our third or fourth year to do that now. That's been very successful. It's an eight-week walk where they walk 832 miles as a team of eight. Uh, and we had 39, uh, female participants, seven male, and 46, um, total. And of that, the benefit that they gained from walking, this is based off of their information that they use the data to determine that the total impact for, uh, in savings of health, whether it be diabetes or cardiovascular disease, is 162,714. So that's why we pushed that program to get people walking, help them get physically fit, uh, because at the end of the day, it helps us as a county and it helps us as a state if we can reduce health costs. Uh, one of the programs they introduced new this year is called Balancing Food and Flight. For the first time, I was able to do it at the Fruitvale ISD. They chose to do it with their third through fifth graders. They did a 20 lesson series, and we had 78 students that participated. Uh, and some of the things that they gained from their knowledge of completing this course was that, uh, 40%, there was a 40% increase in the student knowledge and knowing that they needed to be physically active at least 60 minutes a day. They also, uh, how many hours of screen time? There was a 30% increase in those understanding that they don't need any more than two hours of screen time, whether it's TV, computer, whatever. Uh, so that was an improvement for them. As far as the filling their dinner plate, there was a 16.25% increase in knowledge about the fact that their plate needs to be half full of fruits and vegetables. Uh, also, some of the other things that they were asking to do was to be aware of their average day of actually watching TV and that increased, I'm sorry, their knowledge of awareness about that increased to 8.75%. So that was a huge success. The school was very pleased with the outcome on that. Uh, I just did a Be Well, Live Well series out here at the Housing Authority at the Oaks, the Westview Apartments in Cannon, and sadly, I only had four people who completed the whole series, which was five lessons. Um, they come and go. It's, it's always difficult. There's no requirements for them to come to any kind of, they want them to have a health program, but they don't require them to come, so, uh, they've got 88 apartments filled out there and four showed up, so, you know. Uh, the manager said it's, it's a real problem, but they don't have a solution on how to get people to come learn about health. Uh, we are currently doing another Walk Across Texas. We're doing the Bob Moore Memorial Walk that is open to everybody in the county. Uh, that is so far is doing really well. Uh, we've got like 30, I think there's 33 that are signed up on that right now. Uh, we'll be concluding that this next month. And we'll get the data back from that. Uh, as you know, I do the KME radio program monthly. It's a 15-minute segment on there where I talk about events, things are going on here in the county, or promote whatever we have that I can do with them. Uh, I do newsletters, health and wellness newsletters. I've got like a email list that's got about 389 names on it, and I try to send that at least quarterly to keep people informed about different health topics. Uh, we did the Texas Speaks, uh, which is like the community survey of our county where we find out what people like or dislike or what they think our county needs, and of course, you know, I don't have to tell this group, it always comes up, fix our roads. That's not our job. We can't do that, you know? But, uh, we did find out, you know, a lot of them are concerned about their health and lack of health insurance and those kinds of things. Uh, so that's one reason, diabetes was a huge concern for a lot of people and our results, and so we do try to program to meet that. Uh, we did do our community garden again this year where we take the, uh, fresh produce and things and deliver to our housing authorities. This year, uh, Mother Nature just wasn't real good to the garden. It seemed to struggle one way or another. Uh, same thing with, uh, the Master Gardener volunteers. We struggled with that this year, so we're hoping either to get it corrected or we might have to eliminate that project. Uh, we also planned a big program, a Path to Plate program is what it's referred to. We're gonna do a farm tour, uh, doing a grilling 101 demonstration and have a dinner. Uh, I recruited, got sponsors for it, got bids on everything, got the buses scheduled and everything, and then our COVID numbers came up here in the county and after visiting with our emergency management team and Judge Patrick and everybody, we decided that probably wasn't a good idea to pack 50 people on a tour bus and haul them all over the county and make them all sick at one time, so we decided that we should postpone that until maybe this spring, so everybody keep your fingers crossed on that one. Uh, we did offer the food workshop, preservation workshop for canning, uh, had no responses. Uh, so I don't know whether it was just people afraid of COVID, not wanting to get out. Uh, it's kind of same thing with Do Well, Be Well, hypertension. Uh, had people sign up, then they didn't show up, so, uh, it's kind of been a struggle this year with those type of issues. Childcare providing, we also offered CEUs this year. It was an online thing. We didn't, all I had to do was market it and then the state handled who, who did it, so I don't get those numbers back to tell you how many attended that. Uh, as an FCH agent, you also have specific, uh, 4H duties, and this year, some of my duties were that I had to serve, uh, as a judge for at our district level, different contests, as well as at the state. I was a state judge this year again. And then the district, uh, record books, I served as a judge on that, so, and we worked with the District Five, which is Wood County, and we judged their record books, and in turn, they judged our county's record books, so we were able to take care of all that. And as you can see, I have a lot of educational trainings. Everything has come online with Zoom, pretty much, or Teams, one of those two. Uh, so we've had a lot of training, and I'm not gonna read each one of those for you, but there are a ton of those on there. Uh, we had to go to an in-person one, which was grilling and smoking 101, uh, down at Russ County Expo in Henderson County. Uh, Tommy and I, we went ahead, we decided it was such a big group and everything, we better wear our mask, and we had some of our friends give us some pretty hard times, and no joke, as soon as we got back, it was like, two days later, we got an email saying, uh, we've had several come down with COVID. So we were like, ha, we won on that one. So, but it was a great thing. That was one of the things we were gonna teach at that Path to Plate. Uh, and of course, also, uh, a lot with the diabetes trainings and so forth that were offered. Uh, served as a guest speaker for the Master Gardeners Club this year, as well as at the lines. I did a interpretation of what all I do and what we've done this year, and then, of course, I do a training for parents and leaders for 4H that I offer on Zoom that are for new parents. And, um, again, associations, I serve, um, a National Extension Association as a, uh, committee, subcommittee member, working with planning our national meeting that we just recently had. Uh, I serve on the, as a member of the District Four TEA FCS Association, which is our professional association. And, uh, was elected this year. I'll be serving as a secretary this coming year as we start the new year, and we also will be hosting the District Four TEA FCS Association Conference Membership Meeting here in December, so we'll be having it here on the square, so we'll see a lot of our little agents over here for that. So that's kind of what I've been doing. Uh, you have any questions? I know I ran through that fast, but everybody's busy and in a hurry, so.
Anyone have any questions?
Any questions about what I do, where we go, what we do?
Be well, I'll teach you. You, you had two participants that they didn't show up.
Yes, got set up and that one showed.
Is that, uh, I guess you monitor blood pressure?
Uh, now, we actually tell, teach them how to eat properly to monitor, and that's how, it kind of surprises me. Many people have high blood pressure, but they wouldn't come for that because we, uh, have Richard dieticians who have all kinds of information provided for us, and we have, you know, PowerPoints and things to provide and guide them on how to eat their, how to allow their diet to help improve their high blood pressure. And, yeah.
And I think, uh, thanks to some of the participation was to COVID.
I do.
COVID has affected the whole world.
A lot of my, you have to stop and think, a lot of my participants are elderly, because that's the demographic. A lot of our programming is directed towards, um, that and low income, and a lot of our housing authorities and things stopped me from coming in because they didn't want having group gatherings and that kind of thing, so yes, it has impacted, and hopefully, you know, like, Tommy sided things with Ag, when they have programs, they get CEUs to continue having their pesticide licenses. And I've always told them, if the state ever takes that from them, they're gonna be in trouble because that's how they hold everybody, speak to the fire, show up for those things, is they have to do that in order to get their, uh, CEUs, but on our side, we don't offer CEUs except for childcare, and the state does that. We don't get to do it, so.
Well, great job, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thank you for that good report.
Thanks for y'all's support.
Item number eight, discuss and consider DA's Office Forfever Fund spending request. Uh, our DA, Tom DeCary. Uh, our DA, Tom DeCary is present with us. You may address the court.
I think this is relatively simple and I'm not asking for any money.
That does make it simple.
I want to give you all a report first. Um, the court approved me hiring the, or, or adding a position of fugitive apprehension officer um, this year, and I want to report to y'all that he is doing wonderful. Um, I was hoping we would have, um, a hundred arrests in his first year. Um, that's the goal I set for him. Well, he had five in the first week. So, um, if he keeps that up, um, will be, we will smash my goal. Um, um, he's a little bit, he started, I don't remember the exact date, mid-October somewhere. Um, uh, and he is, uh, well over thirty. Um, I haven't checked with him this week. We may be, we may have hit forty already. Um, so he's doing a great job. It's, uh, John Morrison, um, who was formerly with Will's Point PD. So he has a lot of good contacts in the area. He's been in the area a long time. He knows a lot of these criminals, people that have taken off, so he knows how to find them. Uh, but in that same vein, you all approved, um, a salary for him um, of thirty-nine thousand dollars and some change. Um, when I offered him the position, I wanted to match what he was making at Will's Point. In fact, give a little bump over that. Um, so I added, uh, is it two thousand even Sandy? I added twenty-seven hundred and nineteen dollars out of the forfeiture fund, um, to his salary. Sandy reminded me, um, that, uh, other types of forfeiture spendings, I don't have to have y'all's approval for, but salary increases I do have to have y'all's approval for. So that's what I'm here for today, just asking you to approve that twenty-seven hundred dollar a year, um, salary bump that I gave him.
A total of forty-one thousand.
Yes, yes. And that makes it, that also makes it comparable to what, um, Bill Crawford makes in my office. Um, he actually makes a little bit more than that. He's mid-forties because he gets some state supplement money as well. But, but John, the fugitive officers baseline from the commissioners, from the county budget is the same as Bill's exactly. It's just, um, uh, forfeiture money and state money that, that raises him.
And there's a, a budget amendment.
Yes.
For thirty-two hundred. Okay. So, so what, 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 okay. So total of thirty-two hundred? Oh, out of the forfeiture fund?
Yeah, I just have to, because my employee salary forfeiture line was anticipate, was, was set during the budget before. I anticipated doing this one. So I just need to move it from miscellaneous forfeiture to salary forfeiture.
Any questions for Tom?
Is this something that will have to be done annually, every year come and come for the?
It, yes, but I'll try to do it in the budget process. The rest of the employee supplements I pay were approved in the regular budget process. Just this one got overlooked because the budget was actually sixty days, forty-five days before I hired him.
Is there a motion to approve the, that increase or using her forfeiture money? So that a motion by Commissioner Milton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Item number nine, discuss and consider an approved list of surplus and salvage property by competitive bid or auction for local government code two-six-three-point-one-five-two. Uh, uh, Mr. Carter, would you like to address the court?
Here in the courthouse and then let's start cleaning the tack offices, furniture over there. Basically what this is going to consist of is old jazz tables and chairs, uh, a couple of boxes of old telephones. It don't have any application anymore. Scott stuff, he, he proved it, uh, it's for the stuff. It's other things been stuck back through the years. Uh, some of it's damaged, we're still careful. Anything that's broken or wasted, we've gotten rid of, but these things still have some value to them. And talked to Sandy, she said, will you put them up for sale or auction? And I think what we're going to do is probably go with auction. I think next sale you said in January? Yeah, should be in January. There'll be some additional stuff come along with time, but I want to do one or two things at a time. I'm working with the list there. Just some housekeeping.
Okay. I run that last, I missed that last statement. Regarding, uh, something about January.
Okay, it's auction company and auction company does, they do these periodically. The next auction they got coming up is in January and that's when these things will be listed. I'm coming to get y'all's approval now. Then we'll listen with them, then they'll become available in January.
Okay, with auction, with, uh, yeah, Renee Bates Auction.
I guess we go online to make a bid?
Yes.
And I guess elected officials and county employees could make a bid too.
Did you open to the public? Anyone correct? Yes.
And this is list before, so at this moment, will there be other items added prior to?
The list we got right now, this is what we're going to go with. There's additional items. I want to come before y'all do them. Uh, there is one item on here that, that's a piece of paper in my hand. There's an old Fairbanks scale. It's, uh, the weighing units. And I've got it down on the first floor. It's been stuck in, in the lunchroom down there for, I don't know if it's been, since I've been here for four and a half years. Uh, it's old. It only goes two hundred and fifty pounds max. So that tells you something about it. I've looked online, trying to contact, contact Fairbanks about the history of it, how it is. I haven't been able to find anything yet. I've asked around where this thing came from. Uh, speculation maybe it may come from the jail up here when they did book in up there if they had to weigh people. We were going to put it in auction. You said, I don't just stuck in the lunchroom. I'd been more checked on it. I've talked to Elvis Allen and rented by him. He's asking what the prominence of it is, where it came from. He recommends he held on to it for anything else to be offered up to the Edgewood Living Estates Park. But for now, maybe we'll pull it off the list. Just take onto it here. Do a little more research on it. Okay? It's old.
Oh, it is.
And it's still, it's still working. Anything else of the short value? I've run through Elvis or the metal table, came out of jail. There's some other tables up there just in the way right now. And we packed, we think it's heavy historical value to it. We made sure we're running stuff back.
Is there a motion to approve the list of supplies and salvage property, uh, to be listed with, uh, Renee auctions for public auction?
Yes, sales will come off.
Is there a motion?
Some with exception under those cables.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Pearson. Second by Commissioner LeBrett. Right, you answered my question. I was wondering, do we have to post that same thing that, I mean, we just put it in there and it's public? Okay, any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Thank you, Joe.
Yes, sir.
Item number ten, discuss and consider Rico USA contract for two replacement copiers, one for engine and health, and another for jail administration. Scott, you may address the court.
These are just two copiers that came up for, uh, renewal. Rico got a new contract, uh, currently paying is two hundred and seven, seven-four for those two. And the new contract we're paying a hundred and ninety-sixteen. If we get, if we get a little bit closer on the usage, we try to fine tune that.
Yeah.
On, on what they charge us. Plus the, the state contract goes down a little bit on how much they can charge per copy. That's why a little, kind of goes down a little bit.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson to approve the contract to re, the replacement copiers for engine and health and jail administration. Is there a second by Commissioner West? Any questions or discussion for Scott? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider Rico USA contract for one replacement copier for fire marshal's office.
This is the same thing, just the fire marshal's office. And it, it went from sixty-seven, twenty-three to fifty-three, seventy-two.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number twelve, discuss and consider Rico USA contract for a copier for Constable Precinct Two.
Uh, yes, sir. Constable Burton has a need for a copier. His office is way in the back and he doesn't have any printer or copier back there. And, uh, so we looked at getting a small one for forty-five, fifty-six a month to put back there. Um, it wasn't budgeted, but we're going to pull some of those segments from the other two that we just did. It's just, it's too far for him to go all the way up to the front office to get copies every time. Cause he has to go through the courtroom. She's, if there's having court in there, she can't get in there. So he, he needs to have this copy back there in his office.
So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Milton?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? So, is he actually housing there in that office back there?
Yes.
That he is utilizing the office there?
He does.
To justify the computer.
Yes.
I mean, the copier option.
He comes in the back door and he doesn't have anything to do with court. He's all separated.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider donation of old, no value ice machine from precinct three, Rogan Bridge to bread for the hungry for local government code, uh, two-six-three-point-one-five-two-four.
Yes, sir. This ice machine has been giving us trouble over it. It makes ice, but it won't keep up with, uh, the usage in the summertime. And the reason I put no value on there is because, uh, when I went to get another one, I tried to trade it in with the company that, uh, provided the new one, same, same place this one came from. And they, they said, we, it's not any value to us. And the, the, the bin that holds ice is all rusted out in the bottom of it on the back. And, uh, so I had a, the choice of, of throwing it away or trying to give it to somebody. And so this, uh, food bank there in Will's Point, I contacted them. And I told them I don't guarantee that it'll work or anything, but if, if the court approves it, uh, I'll see if we can donate it to you. So that's what the story is on it. I make a motion. We do it, check with Sandy and she said that was fine as long as it was a, a nonprofit, uh, deal within the county. So I make a motion, we, we donate to.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LeBrett. Any questions, discussion?
I did check with other precincts. Everybody had one that works. So that would just been getting, getting a problem anyway.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Discuss and consider approving property damage release from Texas Association of School Boards for payment in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars for damages from the Edgewood ISB, uh, school bus fire on Lindsay County Road thirty-one nineteen.
Yes, yes, sir. This is, I don't know if it's in precinct three now, precinct one, but anyway, the, uh, the, uh, the bus will, uh, we just rebuilt, uh, overlaid and, uh, redid County Road thirty-one nineteen. And they had a problem with their bus on, on eight fifty-nine and it started, they started smelling smoke and they pulled off on the, uh, thirty-one nineteen right off of eight fifty-nine and the bus burnt all the way down to the ground. And it caused significant damage to that brand new road. And, uh, this is, uh, an invoice, not an invoice, but a bid that I turned into them. And they're going to pay it. And it's just like anytime we get any other kind of damage from an oil company or anything, they, uh, they want the preliminary release and then the signing of the cashing of the check becomes the permanent release. But so this is a, a release that I, I recommend that we sign and then, uh, we'll repair the road next summer when things get right to work on roads. So I make a motion, we accept this and authorize the county judge to sign the, the release.
Okay, now second motion. Second, motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner West. Who's going to repair the road?
Well, uh, uh, we, one of the big chair. I'll answer that. By that time, by that time I know who's it'll be.
Okay.
And, and then.
Keith wants that chair.
Well, I wish it worked that way. Now, when it comes in, we'll have to prove the check and then it'll go into precinct ones. Uh, road bridge and Chad and I have already talked about it on what we're going to do.
Okay, we got a motion, second.
Sure, I need to mention the amount is seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. For the minutes.
All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider approval, what is it, Dale Soul addition in precinct three?
Yes, sir. This is a little addition off of Highway eighty between Will's Point and Edgewood. It's a small, small four, four lots, I believe. I've looked at all of it. They turned in everything we need. They paid their first, uh, uh, application fee. Uh, there's no road involved. They're all over an acre. Uh, all letters have been turned in. I make a motion, we accept this.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget amendments.
I don't have any.
I don't either. There, there is none. So we'll bypass number sixteen, move to item number seventeen, uh, no action on sixteen. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget amendments. We have, you know. You have the budget. Do what, you would have two. We've got one from the jail. And one from, and, and then that other one from the forfeiture fund.
I don't have the, or, yeah, I do. I don't have jail.
You don't have the.
I know what it is.
Thirty-two thousand.
Yeah.
Uh, from salaries to. So moved here. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number eighteen, discuss and consider approval of October twenty-twenty-one financial and investment report of county treasurer to be entered into the minutes of Commissioners Court. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner LeBrett. Any questions or discussion for Keith? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number nineteen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government and approval of entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, you have any comments?
Uh, we have, out of the nineteen, we have eighteen turned in. We're one short.
You have any questions, Mr. Pearson?
Yes, sir. Which one? Didn't make it.
Uh, Constable Precinct One.
Precinct One.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the monthly reports?
So moved.
What, motion by?
Second, Pierce.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any question or discussion about the reports that's been submitted? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. This time we'll enter into a closed executive session. Uh, we've got a couple of items to tend to. We will, after the closed session, we will reconvene to open session.